Okay, we'll call a meeting in order. It is four thirty by my phone anyway. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you for coming. Uh, could we do a roll call, please, Clerk Perren? And again, please use the microphone for the recording so that it comes out better on YouTube.
Roll call Supervisor Bertrand.
I am here. I live here.
Treasurer Hough.
Here.
Clerk Perren, here. Trustee Monet.
Here.
Trustee Depp.
Here.
Clerk O'Connell.
Okay, thanks for coming. Uh, this is a special meeting and budget hearing for public review of the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six proposed budget. Please remember that the budget is always a work in progress, so we are really dealing with a snapshot in time right now. There should have been copies back there. The copy machine, uh, toner cartridge ran out a couple hours ago. We did the best we could. I hope there's enough for everybody. In doing the budget, there were amendments that we needed to make for changes in the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five budget that needed to be done before March thirty-first, or we would have ended up having to do corrective action plans for the state on all of these. For the board members, you have a list of the amendments that we made. And right now, I am going to ask that we pass, or not pass, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the budget amendments as presented right here that we recognize are needed for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five fiscal year. So this has got really nothing to do with the budget we're doing, the upcoming budget we're doing. This is to make sure everything in the past year got fixed, had the appropriate amount of money, and we were not going to get into a problem where uh, the state in reviewing it would then demand that we did corrective action plans on it. So if you want to take a moment to look at it, there isn't really a lot of discussion other than the motion itself. This is what was found. This is what we found. And these were the adjustments that we made to correct it. I can give you a minute to look at it if you'd like. Does it sound like a good idea to anybody? We're getting there. This is for the board. Right now, we're going to look at the budget amendments we we made in the twenty-four, twenty-five, which needed to be done by the thirty-first of this month. Because this is not, this is budget amendments, and then we are going to get into the budget for twenty five, twenty-six. These are amendments to twenty-four, twenty-five. Okay. At this time, I would ask for a motion to approve the budget amendments as presented. This is, I'm talking to the board here. That we recognize are needed for the twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five fiscal year amendments. Do we have that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, do we have a second? Okay, motion by Treasurer. Okay, we have that motion. Is there any discussion on that amongst the board? This is not for the public. I can only reiterate that it took a lot of work to get to this point, and we're here, and this is what we need to pass to fix things going forward for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five.
I do have a question.
Do I have to speak up? If I can't hear you, they ain't gonna hear you.
Um, I do have a question. Um, I don't quite understand and don't have a definitive answer on, second to the last item on the four zero six, the transfer from the Fire General, and I think for me, I need some clarification. Was it a crossover of millages? Was it account to account, fund to fund? Because I am not completely sure at this point in time.
I can read you the information I got.
Thank you.
Um, and and remember, when we started this process, we had decided not to do line items by weekly meetings. So this is a thousand-foot-up view in what we need to do. Uh, concerning the fire truck, um, we purchased a fire truck. Uh, the cost was seven hundred ninety-six thousand three hundred eighty-eight. We took the majority of that cost, six twenty-six, nine fifty-three, from the Fire Equipment and Millage Fund. The rest of the cost, one twenty-three, four thirty-four, was moved into the Fire Equipment Millage Fund from the Fire Operation Millage Fund. Now, in going over this, if the number was one twenty-three or anything, I personally always padded whatever the numbers were a little bit to make sure that in case there was something wrong, we were still going to be okay. I don't know, uh, I believe Millage Fund from the Fire Operation Millage Fund. I also, we did get ahold of our attorney. And let's see. As far as moving the money from the millage, uh, we asked him if that was okay. I sent him a picture of the millage. Uh, he said, "To answer your millage question, it is fine to do it that way." The Operation Millage said, "Improving Fire Department." That, to me, definitely includes purchasing a new truck or new equipment. So the the reference to the clarification on it is there. At this point, any more details, I'm not sure I can get to you. Is there any other discussion on the other budget amendments for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five? From the board? Okay, I'm gonna end the the discussion period then. So for the motion for the approval of the budget amendments as presented, as stated, I would ask for a roll call, please, Clerk Perren.
Trustee Depp.
Aye.
Trustee Monet.
For lack of a clarification, nay.
Clerk Perren, yes. Treasurer Hough.
Yes.
Supervisor Bertrand.
Yes.
Okay, that is four and one opposed. Okay, the motion passes. Okay, now, I would ask for a motion, uh, to close the special meeting, which we're in right now, and open the budget hearing. Do we have a motion to close this special meeting and open the budget hearing for the public?
I'll make the motion.
Yeah, try and use your mic if you can. I don't know that anybody would hear that.
I'll make the motion.
Okay. I'll second it. Uh, we have the motion. So any discussion on opening the motion to open the public, or the budget for the public hearing? Or to open the public hearing for the budget? Sorry about that. Any discussion from the board? Okay, I would end the discussion. So for the motion as stated, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. The motion passes. So we are now in the public hearing on the budget and would open, uh, first to any board comments on the budget. So I would ask the board if you have any comments on this, to make them now, and then as always, we will go to the public comments as second.
Just a comment to...
Use your mic, please.
Just a, just a comment to Tim, that when, when we were going through all that money, we said there, there seemed to be plenty for the fire truck, and then all of a sudden, there wasn't. Well, it didn't get to the right fund at the right time. There was that money. We've since done an investigation. That money, there's still about four hundred thousand in that other one. So we're back to good check. The, the, uh, apparatus is zero right now, but the other one, and I was pleased to find it, believe me. I looked for weeks, and I couldn't find it, but Pam helped out.
Thank you.
Okay, that's all my clarification.
Uh, I would add that, uh, a difficult process was made, um, effectively, uh, made to the point where we could get this done and way more by the addition of Pam Scott. Uh, she was a clerk in Richfield Township for eighteen years and had a lot of experience with BSNA, and her help in all of this was invaluable. Um, I have seen a couple other proposed budgets from other townships. Not nearly as detailed as this thing is, not nearly as well put together. Now, that being said, it's a work in motion. It is fluid all the time. Are there any other board comments on the budget?
Yes. Yes, sir. Um, going through this, I noticed, um, four things that stuck out. I don't understand the two percent increase in pay that was never voted on by this board. I mean, I don't remember ever seeing a resolution. I don't remember us ever discussing it.
This is only allocating the money for us to make a decision on.
And it doesn't have to be done before the fiscal budget year?
We would have to make a decision to spend the money on that.
Okay, so I guess unbeknownst me, so the potential for raises are coming, I guess?
The potential to discuss a cost of living. What I did was allocated money in case we wanted to give raises. Everything that's in here now eliminates that, uh, potential possibility of having to do another amendment to to do it.
Okay.
So we're putting the money in there ahead of time, and, uh, by department, I ensure that the money was allocated, which does not mean spent.
Mm-hmm.
Allocated, I don't mean to talk down, I'm just saying allocated. Allocated for both intended and needed expenditures.
And potential future uses, obviously intended. Okay.
Because you'll see, there's probably more in that, you're gonna find. Uh, are there any other board comments on the budget? Okay, if we're done, uh, at this time, we would accept the public, uh, comments on the budget. And if anybody would like to come up and speak or ask questions or make a statement, you're certainly more than welcome to do so. Hi, Sam, I didn't see you back there.
Clerk Depp.
Okay, we're gonna go once, and yep, come on up, Ron. And again, yeah, the little gray button should be there. Is, if it's green, you're good, and then state your name and where you're from.
Uh, Bill Cleaves, five hundred Chickasaw, mine township. I just wanted to, uh, let you guys know, I've been talking with J.C. and he's got a problem doing grants because of the timeframe, doing two jobs. And I understand that, so I'm gonna take it upon myself to start a grant for new air packs.
I'm sorry, could you repeat the last part?
I'm gonna start a new grant for, he needs new air packs. The last time we bought air packs was two thousand and four. So I'm gonna start on that for him, but if he could get out of that maintenance job, he really needs to be down to that fire department. I mean, at least five days a week. I, I, when I worked there, I worked five hours a day, five days a week. And there was always something to do. It's like your job here. Um, and him getting back up to full pay for a chief, I mean, that was ridiculous when they put him on at half pay, I, I think. Uh, and I could tell you exactly why they did it, and I understand, uh, I wrote the job description, but did not put in there the officer classes that he needs. He needs two officer classes. And the ones that I actually teach through the state are only, they're eight weeks long, two nights a week. Um, we'd never get enough people here to put one on. The closest one we had was Calcasas. Um, the other ones are all downstate. So I can't see him driving two days a week to Lansing or Luddington or Saginaw for eight weeks to take the class. I think it's relatively futile that way. Um, because they, they go from six till ten at night. Um, so I'm getting with Doug at Beaver Creek, and we're gonna try and bring one up here. If we can get enough people, we'll put one on. And I'm, I'll make sure he's in it.
No, thanks. Good.
Have you ever talked to Doc Pratt?
Uh, I could talk to Doc Pratt. I know him.
His, his brother got it right in grants and stuff too. He may be helpful.
Yeah, we, uh, we talked to him about, because we join our two, uh, fireworks companies. Cropper County announced, we get eighteen thousand five hundred dollars a piece for training. So one year, they'll put on a Fire One, Fire Two, and we'll do the other classes, then we'll put on the Fire One, Fire Two, and they'll do the other classes, so we...
That'd be great.
We spent thirty-six thousand dollars, which, which helps tremendously.
No, that'd be great. I'm glad to hear you're back and being involved like that. There are some things that you may or may not be aware of. We had intended, uh, today at our seven o'clock meeting to hire the maintenance person to then shadow with him for a month straight. Um, that person ended up getting another job, and life happens. Uh...
You need somebody who will grass out, though.
Well, in conjunction with that, we had an ordinance officer who wants to take care of some, uh, personal issues before he comes on. That'll be, so that'll be six weeks down the road. Uh, later on tonight, we will officially at least do a motion to hire a person for the compost site, so we had to kind of spin around on that. But in regards to the Fire Department, our plan, and we will go over this tonight at seven, is to have the Planning Commission dive right into grant writing and get really, really good at grant writing in every way, shape, and form possible. Uh, I, I allocated some money to pay people to train if needed. Uh, the man's name escapes me right now, but the one who does the grant writing for Ross Common, he will come out and help us, and we may, uh, pay him, and there are other people who know people. We'll do whatever it takes to get really, really good at this. At the same time, after having done this fiscal, the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget, which we're looking at right now, uh, we had kind of just sat on the Fire Department and the millages and all, there's a ton of money in there. Difficult. When we're done with this, we are going to move to the Fire Department budget, and Pam is going to assist also in that. And at that point, money getting freed up for equipment and different things, it's going to become clearer what we're really looking at there. And we are also, our intention is to do a, uh, recruitment drive. And there was talk about, uh, doing the bonuses, and I have to give credit to to Pam, because some people who already work here look at that. It's like, well, how come they get the money and I don't? And she suggested prorate. If you've been here for a while, you would get X amount of money. A, a new, a new person coming in would get a bonus, but it's not like the people here wouldn't get something. But by looking at the Fire Department, millages, and budget, we will be able to determine how much money we have to play with in there.
I, I got a lot of blood, sweat, and tears in the fire.
Yeah, I know you do. That's... I think we're going in the right direction.
The air packs, we got twelve, so we place twelve air packs, it'll be over a hundred thousand dollars.
That cheap?
And I bought the one in two thousand and four, that were eight hundred dollars a pack. Now we're at like thirteen, twelve.
I, yeah, Bill, I, over the last couple of months, I have sent them to Timothy, who is gonna be the board liaison on the Planning Commission. Stuff for grants comes across my desk all the time. I just, I'm not the guy to be driving that. We need highly qualified people and smart people to start chasing it down and just get better, better and better.
Yeah, I got to license two thousand.
Yeah, it's there, and we may not catch up with it because you know how that goes. You're right, it, it might not be allo, it might, they might allocate it, but we might not get a dispersal of the money until the next year. But we gotta get started. We gotta start somewhere.
You gotta know the deadlines.
Yep. All right, great. Uh, any other public comments from anybody? Yes, sir. Well, go ahead, but please come up and state your name and use the mic. Well, you can accept some of them might not work. This one does.
Hi, I'm Brad Gibson from Garrish Township. I'm just, um, looking at a, I'm looking at the bottom of page six, which I believe is the, um, for your proposed budget, and I'm just wanting, I just have a clarifying, uh, clarification. So what your, this budget is proposing, I believe the bottom of six take is the end of the general fund piece of the budget, correct?
Well, let me take a look here. If I can help you, I will.
Okay.
Uh, well, let's see, beginning fund, ending fund, but it's which department are we in here? So I'll back up a little bit. Township Hall Control. Unless, well, then, Ordinance Officer Control. This zoning, the Zoning Board of Appeals. All of that, I believe, is in the, uh, Hall Control. I could be wrong. But when you get to the bottom line, um, okay, what was your question?
Yeah, well, it looks like, and I don't know your coding system, but all the one oh ones, I'm assuming is the general fund ones, but...
I believe so.
Yeah, so my question is, I just want to make sure I understand the budget that's being proposed is, so you're looking at a, on an annual, uh, budget, a little over a hundred thousand dollar deficit budget for the twenty-five, twenty-six year, correct? So you'll be eating up about a quarter of the fund balance? Is that what I understand?
Yeah, right here, the in parentheses.
Yeah.
Um, at this point, I'm gonna defer to Pam, who can probably answer you more effectively, only because, like I had said, we had voted to do this budget off the bottom line and not tear everything apart right now. What we will do is get into the Fire Department and get into that specific stuff.
And also, there's still revenues that are coming in as well, so th- these aren't hard numbers by any means.
No, I, I understand that. I, I've just, um...
I, I am at a deficit to explain it.
It looks like to me, if I want to make sure I understand it right, just...
Pam, would you like to speak to that?
You have, you have a...
By looking, by looking at it, it looks like, you know, we're gonna lose a hundred and two thousand dollars. But you also gotta take in the fact that a lot of these departments, money won't be spent.
Sure.
And like I said, the revenue comes in, so it's just a projection of, of...
No, I understand, I understand. So, um, and then, ju- another quick question, um, so the, the, I, I can't remember how it works with townships. I think non-chartered ones, it's every two years or something, but you, when do you, do you get an audit, or when is the audit expected to be done?
Excuse me, every year, and it's usually about midsummer.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, if it, if you, Pam, if you think you can shed light on that to the point that it effectively explains it, go right ahead if you'd like.
Hi.
Hi.
Thanks so much for your question.
Sure.
I can tell you, we've worked at the budget, and I've worked with the supervisor a lot. There are things that they'd like to see happening around the, especially this township hall, getting it painted, getting it, the, the, um, parking lot done. There's things like that which are what they're looking for to get done. Um, but you gotta remember, it's a proposed budget. So they did pad it a little bit more, so it looks like it's gonna be a deficit, but you'll never know that until near the end.
No, I understand that, and I understand you'll amend the budget during the year, and I understand the audit will be the actual numbers. I just want to make sure I understand what you're passing before the end of the month. It is a annual deficit budget, and every budget's just...
Well, and technically, if you use the, if you put the cash in with the revenue, it is not a deficit.
It's not a, actually, not a deficit, but on an annual basis, you are, you are absorbing money from the fund balance the way this is.
From the fund balance, which is the cash, and you can use that as revenue also.
Sure, I understand. Thank you.
See, can you imagine me explaining that? All right, uh, are there any other comments from the public here?
Yes, I have one. I think I need my phone.
Yes, please use one, because the way the recording works, it won't come out for the people listening to it.
Okay. So...
So please use the mic or, please use the mic if you can, so that...
Is it on?
It's on, yes. Thank you very much.
All right, here I am.
It's just people complain, because when you watch a video, you can't hear it as well as we do here.
My name is Terry Cleaves, and I'm here to see what budget you guys were gonna pass this year. And as far as I know, what are you saying as far as that there's extra revenues coming in? What are you talking about?
Primarily, there is constantly money coming in and going out.
Revenue sharing comes in from the state.
Right, and you can calculate that and put it in your budget, just like you do your expenditures.
We don't know what it is.
Well, what was it all the four years? What, so did you estimate tax monies too?
We got a statement from the assessor as to what the tax monies were, and we used them.
And, and you used them?
Yeah.
So that's what these are as far as in the revenue lines?
Uh, without me going somewhere that I'm not sure of, I believe that's exactly what happens.
So if, okay. And you guys aren't gonna go over all these numbers at this budget hearing?
No, we are not.
And why is that? I mean, the numbers you're using.
Because we made that available to the public over two weeks ago for anybody to look at. Yeah, we're not gonna go over it. We're gonna go over the bottom lines and the budget that we're gonna pass right now. If you have questions about a specific thing, that's what you're here to do.
Fifteen pages and ask questions when you haven't even went over them.
That's why it was, uh, put out for the available, it was on, available to the public two weeks ago, probably ten, eleven days ago, it was put on the webpage.
Yeah, I did read that.
There was a notice posted in the paper.
I do have it. I actually printed it.
That is what our obligation is, and that's what we did.
Well, at a budget hearing, my thought is the obligation is to go over the numbers.
Uh, again, repeatedly stated that we were not going to tear this apart line by line.
When I, when you said that to me, I feel like I need to have a rebuttal on that.
Well, you're more than welcome to. I mean, I, others, for the, short of repeating myself, that's what happened.
Well, you don't have to say a thing. It's my commenting. I'm commenting.
You're right.
Just like when you're talking, the public doesn't say.
I will shut up. Thank you.
Uh, I'm not saying that, but what I would like to know is, under your page and a half that was attached to your budget that you put online for the public, I guess I need some clarification on what it means. For instance, millagers are, millages are not vogue now and will be difficult to pass. What do you mean by that?
If you're asking me, that was in a overview statement I did when we put out the first proposed budget.
That's the only one I see online.
This one is, well, we have to pass this one, then it goes online.
Yeah, but you had, you should have had this one online to review, so when you're saying that I'm, it was online, if it's not the same, then we didn't review it.
You are correct in that statement. This is why we're here today.
Okay, so I guess the question again is, what does millages are not in vogue now and will be difficult to pass mean?
Okay, that was in my explanation from two weeks ago about why it related to the fact that we may pad some things, and we also need to get real tight with this budget and figure out exactly what we have, because in the future, trying to drag money out of millages, but when I say in vogue, I'm saying they've been getting shot down left and right.
Not here in Lyon. I don't know of one that hasn't.
The Fire Hall didn't pass in Garrish. I'm talking about in general here. I don't wanna... The rea, that statement means that it is currently not, vogue means like it's not a cool thing to be just passing one.
Well, okay, maybe in your... Well, okay, maybe in your dictionary, but okay. Yeah, I'm at a loss for words over this whole meeting so far, I guess I'll leave it at that.
No, thanks, um. I can tell you that next year, when we do the budget, we will be, uh, doing more weekly meetings and breaking it down by department and tearing them apart. And, and we're going to do that with the fire department.
Do that by amendments, I understand that, but usually a budget that you're passing has some relevance to the numbers that you're gonna use during the year. You're saying, basically what I'm hearing is you gotta look at, she has. Because you can't answer a question and you bring someone else in to do it, you're the supervisor.
Yeah, we actually had that discussion before, didn't we? Uh, my, my intention has always been to bring the best people in here and get the best advice I can. Are there any other questions from the public here?
Yeah, I do have one more. Where was that special meeting?
Okay, hang on, I, I, because we're in a special meeting, you can come back and say something, but please use the mic or it will not come out on the recording.
I can come back up and say it?
Yeah.
Go right ahead.
So this special meeting that you had. So the special meeting that you had before this meeting, where, when was it posted?
When we, uh, did the meeting to initially bring the, the first version of this budget to the public, we posted it on the webpage.
I'm talking about the special meeting that you opened and closed before the budget meeting.
This is, yeah, we just did, uh, we post, this has been in the newspaper for two weeks.
You created a special meeting where you just voted on, on amendments for last year's. Then you closed the meeting and opened the budget meeting.
Yes.
The first special meeting that you just opened and voted in, where was it posted?
Pam, I'm gonna refer to you here, I think I tried to answer, but maybe it's not working.
Okay, every budget hearing is part of a special meeting.
Open and close another meeting.
Okay, so when you do a budget hearing, first you have a special meeting because it has to be a special meeting, and then you go into the budget hearing and then you go out of the budget hearing, back into the special meeting. I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's not how I did it for five years, but.
Well, it's how I did it for eighteen, so.
And why?
All right, we're not gonna get into this part. She's helpful, she gave you an answer, if you got complaints, come to me. Are there any other public comments in regards to this? Yes, we are still in public hearing on the budget. Thank you for keeping me on protocol there, sir. Okay. If there are no more public comments, I would ask for a motion to close the special meeting.
Close the budget.
Oh, okay, I'm down, I gotta go down. To close the budget meeting and reopen the special hearing. So do we have that motion?
I will make a motion to close the public hearing and go into special meeting.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second. Is there any discussion on that? Okay, that motion, uh, for that motion, as stated, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, that motion passes. There you go, a minute, somehow I lost part of my, uh. Okay, at this point then, we would have asked, or I would ask for a motion to reopen the special meeting. Do we have that motion? The motion. Okay, do we have a second? I'll second it. So we have a motion to reopen the special meeting. Is there any discussion on that?
Were you discussing something special about the special meeting?
Well, we're going back into where we started, yes.
Okay.
Okay, well, end the discussion, so, uh, all those in favor of reopening the special meeting, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, we're back into the special meeting. At this point. I seem to have, at this point, we need to make a motion to pass the, pass the General Appropriations Act resolution. Is this correct? Yeah, okay. And that is the next thing for the board members here, that is the next thing in your packet, which we are obligated every year to do this. The General Appropriations Act resolution includes the budget. So at this point, I would ask if, uh, there is a motion or entertain a motion, to approve the General Appropriations Act resolution.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Yes, I'll second.
Okay, we have a second by Pern. So, uh, we have the motion, is there any discussion on this from the board members here?
I have a procedural question. Since this was included in a special meeting, was this on the agenda for the special meeting? And by default, should we not ask to amend the agenda to include this since this was never included in the special meeting and it can only be done if all members are present?
Uh, you may be right about that. And looking at these notes when we went through it, we are here asking for a motion to approve it and you are saying, uh, what would be the alternative method to stay on the protocol?
Well, since it is a special meeting, all items listed for a board have to be listed in the special meeting agenda. It's not listed, therefore, by default, we can ask, only because we're all present by state statute, to amend the special meeting agenda to include the General Appropriations Act and then move forward.
Sounds a little bit more precise to me.
Sorry.
Uh, would you like to state that motion and me repeat it?
Do you already have a motion in the board?
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
So we have to remove that motion or amend it?
That motion and then make a motion to add it to the agenda.
Okay, then, uh, I would make a motion that we rescind that. Just rescind it? Okay.
Whoever on, made the motion, just say we're sending the motion.
Rescind the motion.
All right. Okay, and then from that point, I would ask for a motion to add to the agenda to the approval of the General Appropriations Act, which includes the proposed twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six fiscal budget, fiscal year budget. So do we have that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
I will second.
Okay, we have that motion, is there any discussion on that from the board? Okay, uh, we can end the discussion. So by adding it to the agenda, do you believe we can now move forward with the motion or do we need to restate it?
We, all those in favor.
Okay. Uh, for the motion to add it.
To add it to the.
Yeah. Okay, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Yay.
Aye.
Aye, and all those opposed? Okay, that passes. So now that it is added, uh, I would ask for a motion to approve the General Appropriations Act, which includes the proposed twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six fiscal budget. So do we have that motion as stated?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, do we have a second? I'll second. Okay, so we have the motion, is there any discussion from the board on that?
Yes, there is. Um, it is titled incorrectly, assessed for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, not twenty-five, twenty-six.
You are correct, sir, that that is the wrong date. If we strike that date and, and change it, um, to twenty-five, twenty-six, I think I can restate the motion and let it be known that I am striking it on this paper and changing it to twenty-five, twenty-six. Would that meet the protocol as far as your, as you're seeing this?
That one, I'm not actually sure. If we'd have to just all in favor, say, yeah, we approve that, change the dates, make it legal. Yeah, go ahead.
I, well, I have seen, uh, other supervisors do it that way, but I want to check with you because you would be the one who would maybe know.
I believe so.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead, it's okay, right?
I would assume you would state the motion as corrected.
Yeah, exactly, not as presented, as corrected. Yep.
And you could put as corrected per date.
And time and place and.
Okay, so if I strike twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five and replace it with twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, then I would ask for a motion to approve the General Appropriations Act as corrected, which includes a proposed twenty twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year budget. Okay, do we have that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. So we do have the motion, is there any further discussion now after Timothy's excellent, excellent catch on the protocol here and the date? Is there any other discussion on this?
Um, are we reading this for public view or for the public or do they have a copy at your disposal?
I knew you were gonna say that.
I know, I'm sorry.
Well, there's some copies back there because when we went through this before, if you remember, the attorney had said if there's copies there, you don't have to read the whole thing.
Okay.
The question would be, did we have enough copies for everybody in this room or not?
I just wanted to make sure.
Because the copier quit in the middle of doing all of this. Uh, Johnette, is there any still there, does it look like there was enough? Okay, then I'm gonna go that we do not have to read the whole thing. Okay, is there any other discussion from the board? Okay, then at that point, because this is certainly a budget, I would ask for a roll call, Clerk Pern.
Supervisor Bertrand?
Yes.
Treasurer Hough?
Yes.
Trustee Monet?
Yay.
Trustee Deadburn?
Yes.
Clerk Pern, yes.
Okay, then that motion passes. So at this point, that was the business of the special meeting and we will, again, entertain, uh, public comment now. So if anybody has any additional comments they'd like to make, come on up and make them. Okay, going once. Okay, if there is no additional public comment, then at this point, I would ask for a motion to close the special meeting in the time being five fifteen. Do we have that motion?
I make the motion.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. We have the motion, uh, is there any discussion on that? Okay, for that motion as stated, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yay.
And opposed? Okay, the motion passes, so thank you all for coming and we will have our regular board meeting at seven o'clock.